Okay, it is March 20th, 2019, 4:30 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. First we'll let you stand and we'll have the pledge allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Tom Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Okay. Public forum. Time for the general public, if they have any comments that items not on the agenda. See none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The change order number two for the airport snow removal is a change order of $82 or $89.82, get my numbers in the right order. And the public hearing for the easement for electrical service on water treatment plant will be March, April 3rd, 2019 at 4:30 PM. Approval on the wastewater treatment plant for $1,414,337.50. Is that change order?
Make motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Okay, any old business. Under new business, we have the submittal of CDBG grant application on behalf of the Village Northwest. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Has there been any comments?
No, no.
Okay. And I see Barry, she's not here yet. So, okay. Have to read this following citizens' participation plan. The following information, I don't have to read that. The need for the project has been identified by the Village Northwest Unlimited with assistance from project architect Canyon Moss Burger Architect and the City of Sheldon in order to construct two new housing units on the Village Northwest Limited campus. Furthermore, the need for this project was identified by due to the age of the current housing units that need to be replaced on the Village Northwest campus. These homes being replaced are necessary because they are totally handicapped accessible to meet physically needs of the intermediate care facility disability clientele. The estimated funding for this project will be comprised of $600,000 in CDBG assistance and approximately $1.9 million in local funding anticipated from local fundraising efforts and reserve funds. The total project cost is estimated to be $2.5 million. Application for the CDBG funding will be submitted to the Iowa Department of Economic Development Authority by April 19th, 2019. Persons benefiting from this project are considered to be limited clientele and therefore presumed to have at least 51% of the clientele to be low to moderate income per HUD's definition. Because their clientele includes persons with severe mentally and physical disabilities, the portion of the S- our CDBG funding that will be benefited to the low to moderate income persons with the maximum of $306,000. No person our business will be displaced as a result of the recommended project. In the event that any person our business are actually displaced as a result of the recommended project, the entitled involvement in this project will adhere and be required of Uniform Relocation and Assistance and Acquisition Act of 1974 as amended. Village Northwest will construct two intermediate care facilities, homes for individuals with intellect and physical disabilities on the campus located in Sheldon, Iowa. Each home will be 5,000 square feet and serve six residents. These homes are designed and built to be totally handicapped accessible. Each person will have a private bedroom and a half bath. Because of their physical and other medical needs of the people who live in the IFICD homes, their homes are designed with amenities to enhance the care environment for the person served while maintaining a welcoming, home-like environment. Okay. So, do you have any other comments, concerns on the public hearing? Barry, do you have anything? Nope. Okay, then we can move to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
I'm going to abstain because I also sit on the board for the village.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay, now we have to consider the sub recipient agreement. Basically, the city will be the pass through, if I'm correct. We'll need a motion to consider that agreement.
So move.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
I'm staying again.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
We'll need a motion on resolution authorizing the grant.
So move.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gils.
Abstain.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay, so that, on to item B, discussion and direction regarding the utility billing reminder notices. Ange, I think that's yours?
So, we've been tossing around the idea of going away with reminder notices. Our process, as we explain it right now, is a little bit lengthy. The reminder notices really only serve a purpose, to remind people that they have a bill due. We do not, there's no finance fee on it, there's no increase to it. Currently, I would say we average about, I would say we average about 450 notices per month. And it comes to between $250 and $260 every month. That's not figuring in the time that everybody spends putting them out. In order to do that, it does take a change in the ordinance and we would want to give the public plenty of months' notice. I think some people do actually rely on them. But I, we wanted to get any feedback that you guys had before we decided to do away with that and possibly change the actual due dates on our utility bills.
So these are to remind someone that their bill is past due, is that what I'm getting?
It's not technically past due because there's no finance fee on it. So our bills, our bills are due the 10th of each month. And if it's not paid on the 10th, then we send out a reminder notice the next business day and you have 12 days to pay that. And then they're late.
Okay, but if we do away with this, is there anything that would continue that would remind them that they still owe it?
A disconnect notice.
Okay. When the lights go out. Or the...
Well, the lights won't go out.
Light are shut off.
You pay by this day or, or they will go out.
Or they will.
It's...
How many days after disconnect notice? Three.
What's been the effectiveness? I kind of feel that because of the proposal, they're not been real effective, these notices?
Probably the, the best example I can give you is if someone's check has gotten lost in the mail and they get a reminder and it alerts them that, to something like that. But like I said, there are, there are some citizens in town that I don't even know if they opened their utility bill and they just rely on the reminder notice and then they pay going by that due date.
So is there, are we eliminating it because of the labor involved or because of the expense or both?
Probably both, yeah.
So is there an alternative?
We could look into an alternative.
What, you mean the mail or... Well, they're getting a notice and they're getting, they would still get a second notice. It's, you know, it's just...
So there's redundancy.
Yeah, well, redundancy, I mean, we're just, it looks to me like we're just kind of calling them along. I was surprised at the number of notices that are sent out, that it takes that long. And so, yeah. It's a nice reminder, but for the postage of $200 and you double that, at least for labor, if not more. You've got 500 bucks a month, that's $6,000 a year, just to collect what's already owed.
It's attractive. I'm not arguing the point at all. I just want everyone to understand why we're doing it, so it's recorded.
What was your question?
The timeframe, this goes out how many days after?
Okay, so this goes out on approximately the 11th unless it falls on a weekend or holiday. Then they have 12 days to pay on the reminder. And then after that, we send out a disconnect notice. We actually deliver a disconnect.
Okay, so this would not eliminate the disconnect notice?
Correct. We would still deliver a disconnect notice that they would have three days to pay in order to avoid having their utility shut off.
To soften the blow, maybe it would, instead of three days, maybe we would give them five days or seven days.
A week.
You know, a week.
Okay. It's just, that's, those are things that we would have to work out as well as like when the actual due date would be. It's just kind of figuring out if the reminder notice could be done away with over time as we educate the community.
They're getting their bill. They're getting, and yeah, we're just reminding, two weeks later, they get a reminder that you got your bill and they paid it.
But there's no penalty with that reminder, so it's just like, hey, let's know you're late. You don't pay us another two weeks, then we'll get serious. We'd be better off making a due date later in the month, I think, skipping that step. That's what Ange is...
But that due date is...
So technically, right now, people have 10 days to pay their bill or they're late.
Right.
That's a pretty short turnaround.
Yeah, 20, I mean, we, there can be a grace period, but I don't think we need to be sending out notices, so if it's, whether it's that 12 days or after, you know, right now, so March 11, you sent out those notices. If you don't have anything, you give, they got 12 days to respond?
I believe the, the bills are now due on the 22nd. I think they're due Friday. So then they have all weekend too and then on Mondays, when we would deliver disconnects.
They have three days after the disconnect.
Before it's, and, and we call them.
Yeah.
But if you extend the, if you extend the time on the backside of the disconnect, I think we'd probably be adding a lot more work for the guys to go out and hang the, or deliver the notices. Could that be the other side of it?
I don't think that, I don't think that makes a difference.
The disconnects are hand delivered already.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I mean, would you end up with more of them?
Oh, that's what you mean.
Without the reminder?
Without the reminder.
In the beginning, I think that'd be a very good possibility.
And that would be...
Initially, but there'll be some training involved, I would imagine, and then people know that I need to pay the utility bill.
That's why I was questioning whether there's an intermittent option other than the mailing to facilitate that cultural change that we're really talking about. And it might be cheaper and more effective than sending people out the disconnect.
Yeah, the thought I had as I was reading this is we could send out an email, but you probably don't, not everyone has email addresses.
No, and actually, our software doesn't allow us to email reminders. We can e-bill the original bill, but our reminder notices, we can't.
Okay.
Otherwise, that would be lovely.
It'd be a phone call.
Yeah, I mean, where you could even set it up as an automatic, it spits it out on the 12th or...
I think we can effectively communicate this over time and...
And like I said, it's not something that has to be put into effect. It'll take quite a while to educate the community and then change in the ordinance and everything like that. So if you want to think about it, that's, you know, it's fine. I don't think we absolutely need a decision tonight, but we wanted to make you aware that we're thinking about that too.
I'd say go ahead with it myself, but it's just me.
I would think, come up with a plan and you're the one that deals with it on a daily basis and I think we'd have to support what you come up with.
Is there a time period where you can't turn off the utilities, like in the wintertime?
Not with water.
Okay.
There is a hearing procedure, though.
Yes.
So there's protection.
Oh, you mean, okay.
For our code, there is.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Where you need to go. Okay, then we'll have the first reading of the ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Sheldon, Iowa by amending provisions of Section 115.4 pertaining to cemetery rates. And I believe they are increasing by $25. And then there was some discussion about, between the private cemeteries and our cemeteries, they differ in price?
The price did differ for open and closing and then we're making them the same.
Okay, and those will be made the same. And both of those groups were notified of this change. If I read Sam's email correct? Direction of the council?
I think it's been five years since there's been any increase in cemetery.
Because I believe that was their first meeting they had in five years, too.
That could also be true.
The last one was, I think, four years ago.
Four years ago? I knew it was somewhere in there, I read.
And based on the discussion the other day at the meeting, I think Sheldon's still less than some of the area.
Yeah, in the ballpark with some, less than others. Competitive, I think would be a fair word.
Yep.
I'd make motion that we recommend, or approve the recommendation.
Support.
And that's moving it to the second reading.
Yeah.
Discussion. Now I'll entertain a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Hamel.
Hent. Aye. Okay, city manager, he is not here today. Todd, do you have anything? Lyle? Ange?
Oh, I was, I'm sorry, yes.
Spring cleanup.
Yeah, spring cleanup is going to be the end of April, so flags do go on sale April 1st. Flags are $10 for every appliance and computer, electronic, everything like that. They need a sticker, which are $10 each. So those can be, the flags can be purchased in our city office.
Council to my right?
I have a question and I'm not sure if it's this, I probably should have brought this up under old business, but where are things at with the fireworks at the pavilion discussion? We had, reading the minutes, there were two motions that died for a lack of a second. So is that dead in the water or where, what's happening with that?
I believe I, after reading the pavilion minutes, you can talk on that, sorry.
I think they deferred it back to the pavilion and the board on the, the pavilion board decided to wait another month because there's a affected party that wants to attend a meeting and they couldn't this month, so they're going to come to the next meeting.
Okay. So that, that issue is still...
Still on the table.
Okay.
On my left, have any comments? Okay, next, determine the process of appointment of mayor at the April 3rd council meeting. Have some kind of outline that Sam came up with to move forward. And I think you guys were all emailed that in the packets, or it was part of the packets. Any discussion?
I guess I'm open to some flexibility on that particular thing. I know that there was some discussion about whether we should hold a special election or not, or appoint, and I realize that we decided to go ahead with appointment. But I think the question was asked, could that be changed? I don't know.
The, the question being, once you've chosen to go by appointment, can there still be a special election? In my opinion, yes. And gonna expand on that in a couple of ways. First, even if you do appoint somebody, there is a 14-day window in which a special election can still be requested.
Okay.
All right? So even if there is an appointment, there's still the possibility of a special election. Second...
By petition, I assume?
What's that?
By petition, I assume?
Correct.
Okay.
Second, even though you've published the notice and put the public on notice that there is the potential for appointment, if you fail to appoint somebody within the required time period per the statute, that will then trigger a special election as well. So you could have the petition leading in a special election. You could have basically the failure to appoint leading to a special election. Or, thirdly, I suppose you could change your course and decide that, for whatever reason, a special election makes more sense. I do think that's within the council's prerogative. Where you're constrained is time periods. For instance, you can't have the mayor pro tem just serve until the general election. You either have to appoint or have a special election. So you have to do one of those two things. You can't just let Brad head things up as, in the mayor pro tem capacity indefinitely. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat, yes.
Okay, well, if I, if there's...
No, that, that clarifies things. And then we were also sent out some suggested guidelines about if we would do the appointment, how that might be handled. And the suggestion was that they be by ballots of the councilmen that were signed and disclosed after the voting. And with a smaller group and, and only, you know, the five council votes or four cons, five council votes, I guess the only concern that I would have is if I decide to support Wayne instead of Fred or Fred instead of Wayne. I don't want the other one mad at me, but that's the way it goes. I'll get over it.
So, and again, you know, Sam has put these guidelines together. I would emphasize that they're guidelines. I mean, you will not find in the code or the attorney general's opinions a specific way in which you have to appoint. Now certainly, the appointment has to be approved by the council with appropriate numbers and quorums and things like that, but in terms of even, you know, soliciting written letters of interest or going through this ballot type process and those particulars, those are guidelines to help the process potentially and not statutory requirements.
Okay. Okay. We have two ca, two people that...
Three, I believe.
Yeah, but there are two here in attendance. Did you guys receive any suggestions of how we were going to handle that?
Yes.
Oh, so you did get a copy of that, okay.
Same email, I think the same thing as you mailed to us.
Okay, good.
So Micah, if I could add a little more clarification for my sake in regards to what you shared, in regards to a special election, would the special election have to happen, be executed within that 40 days?
To actually conduct the special election?
Yes.
No, it has to happen, and this is the statutory requirement, at the earliest practical date, but no fewer than 32 days after the notice was received by the county commissioner. So if you decided April 3, for instance, that, you know what, let's just do a special election. That special election, there's going to be at least a 32-day waiting period because the election folks need time to gear up for an election. So, and then within the statute, there's a limited number of dates to choose from. And so that would have to be coordinated with the county to make sure it's the correct date. My best guess is you would be looking probably at an early May date or I think there was a date a little bit later in the summer.
Okay.
Okay? So it, it's not like you decide, well, let's have a special election and it happens in the next week or two. It's going to be at least a 32-day waiting period.
So with that being shared...
On a Tuesday.
So with that being shared, how does that correlate to the restrictions on the pro tem's ability to...
Okay, because you have chosen to do a special election. The statute doesn't say the pro tem shall only serve for 40 days or 60 days.
Okay.
It's just that you have to either appoint within...
You have to have a direction.
Yes. Within, if there's no appointment made within 40 days per the city code, 60 days now under the state code, but within that time period, then that's what triggers the special election at the earliest practical date, but not earlier than 32 days.
Or if the council chooses to go special election earlier than that. Okay, all right, that helps. Okay.
Or the key, or the petition with the signatures comes in and says we want a special election, would be the other...
Can that petition come in at any time?
14 days after the appointment.
After the appointment. Nothing can preclude the appointment.
No, and it could, I mean, you can have the special election petition request before the appointment.
Well, that's my question. If one of the names basically wanted it to go to a special election versus appointment, could they, could they come in with that petition by the end of the week and would that dictate the...
That the time, okay, here it is. If within 14 days after publication of the notice, or within 14 days after the appointment is made, there is filed with the city clerk a petition which causes a special election to fill the vacancy, an appointment to fill the vacancy is temporary and the council shall call a special election.
So it has to happen afterwards?
You know, it could happen already because we posted...
We've already published the notice.
Oh, okay.
And that was one of the reasons we did is to know where we stand as far as special elections.
The reason I'm asking these questions, I have had a couple citizens ask me about whether or not a special election is not the preferred method to choose over an appointed process. And so I just want to make sure that through our discussions today, the information that I think those people, and I'll get back to them as well with this clarification, so people know what the options are. So, so that's what I'm trying to accomplish through this, as well as my own.
But even with an appointment, that appointed person still has to run in the November general election, correct?
Well, if a person's appointed now or within the next couple of weeks, that appointment will only go into the November election.
Okay.
And whoever's appointed isn't automatically a candidate.
No.
There's still...
They have to go through the requirements.
The requirements, which include...
Signatures.
Signatures, campaign, potential disclosures to the campaign board. And so all those things would have to happen at that point. The appointee is only for a short term.
Only until the next general election of the city.
Now, if there's a special election, that person would serve to the conclusion of the former mayor's term.
Yes.
So there's some, there's some wrinkles in that. It, you know, typically, when we think of vacancies and appointments, we think about, well, they'll get to the end of December or something like that, but it's, it's very, it's a unique situation, only to the general election.
Okay.
And right now, when would that term... And right now, when would that term be for the previous mayor? When's that?
Uh, my recollection, she was two, three some years.
Yeah, she's got...
She would be at the halfway point of her four-year term, the end of this year. So she'd have, you have, if they were elected now, it'd be the rest of this year plus two more years.
It's my understanding that there's others who might be interested yet that we have not been notified by. What is the deadline for those notifications? The 28th, is that correct?
I think it's March 28.
March 28.
Again, and I, I want to speak to that. There has been this notice published, and it talked about submitting letters of interest by a certain date. The statutory requirement was to publish notice to notify the public of the council's intent to fill the vacancy by appointment. The deadline is, in a sense, arbitrary. In other words, project as a city who might be interested, but there is no statutory requirement of a letter of interest, there's no deadline for a letter of interest that comes from a statute. In theory, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but in theory, someone could make a motion tonight to say, I desire to appoint so-and-so, it could be seconded, and you perhaps could have a new mayor. Now, I wouldn't suggest that, but...
Let's do that, just to chat things out.
It may prohibit your city manager from going on educational opportunities in the future, teaching. The second part was said in jest.
Yeah.
I know. Let's throw him under the bus. But in theory, that could happen.
As long as we're talking theories, could it also happen then that somebody that has not turned in a letter of interest shows up on April 3, goes and gives his stump speech, and is also, becomes a candidate at that point?
If the council, the council could decide that someone who has submitted a letter of interest, or all of them, not be appointed, all those things are on the table.
Yeah.
You're not bound by who submits a letter, you're not prohibited from considering anybody else. These are guidelines, the, and what you've tried to do is try to give people a path to follow, and in the interest of transparency, I think was the goal, is to let people know that there's an opportunity. So, any other hypothetical questions?
My only comment is, in all these hypotheticals, we have a process that we've laid out. I say we let it run its course, know the, and knowing that there could be a change or something different along the way as it gets too close to that point, but my thought is stick with the plan for now.
And if you follow that plan, and you get to April 3, and you have a situation where no one's appointed, there would be a short period of time in which an appointment still could happen, or at that, at the end of that period, special election?
And that petition would just have to be dropped off at the city office, at the city clerk, not at a council meeting?
City clerk.
Okay. Okay, so proceed like we have outlined as our guideline as we move forward. Okay, any other discussion?
The only other thing I would say, too, is that at, at our next meeting, we pretty much follow the format Sam has laid out for us, that seems to be a good...
Well, yes, unless somebody, somebody submits a petition, that takes care of the plan.
At this point in time, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good practice to...
The way we are right now today, yes.
Put it out there. I think it's good practice to do that. I'm just saying, you're not legally bound.
Yeah.
And, you know, sometimes you have to call an audible because something happens that you don't expect.
Right.
So we look forward to that.
I think our discussion's good for the community as a whole to understand exactly what their options are as well, so I'm glad we had the discussion.
Okay, on the agenda's, agenda, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.